Six o'clock, I call the meeting to order. For sort of business public comment, if you have a comment for the board, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Address your comments to the board, no more than three minutes. And if anybody's interested, go ahead.
Should these be related to the upcoming discussion? Or should we wait? If we have comments on the upcoming discussion...
If it's on the agenda, I'll comment when we get to that particular subject. But if you wish to comment now, that's up to you.
I'll wait until the agenda is over.
Okay. Anybody else? No. First person up is Rachel Eads.
I'd like to say a few things before she starts, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Would you... I can take the mask off, or I can...
It's up to you.
Well, I don't mind having you not. It's up to you to use your clothes.
Oh, I don't care.
So, I'd like to start by saying that I think we have a really great proposal coming from Revision tonight. Revision is a fantastic company. They've received tons of awards over the years. Everywhere you go, you see arrays. Everywhere you go on the seacoast, you'll see arrays put out by Revision. They've done over 100 municipalities, and a lot of which have done more than one PPA, for instance. I don't know how many derm is up to. They must be up to a dozen by now. And large ones. Anyways, one of them is on Lee property, of course. When I came a few weeks ago, we talked about upgrading the service to the transfer station to a 400-amp service. So, the proposal that they're going to give is based on having the upgrade. And I'm just going to talk about our situation here in Lee with regards to electricity, because it's kind of complex. And I'll start by saying that Lee gets its... The town of Lee, the municipality, gets its power from EverSource and the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. And so, two buildings... Now, these two buildings are on EverSource, the library and the old town hall. And the ones that are on NEC Power, NHEC Power, is the safety complex, this building, transfer station, town salt shed, the highway department annex. They're all powered by New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Last year, to get this rolling, I was asked to get the electric cost for all four buildings. And at, for the year ending October 30th, 2021, we had spent $22,566 for the co-op buildings for one year. Since then, electricity has gone up over $0.2 a kilowatt. So, that's probably more like $25,000 a year. So, I did a little math. Twenty thousand, $25,000 a year for 10 years would be $250,000 for electricity. Yeah, $25,000 a year for 40 years would be a million dollars. That's not, that's not taking into account inflation. And the reason I bring up 40 years is because the proposed solar array is expected to last 40 years. So, it'll be giving the town power for 40 years. So, basically, the proposed array will be used to offset that million dollars. Or million dollars plus, when you count inflation. It should be quite a bit more than that, actually. In January of 2018, we received a proposal from Revision to install an array on the transfer station roof. Almost like, pretty close to this one, pretty close. And on March 13th, 2018, a warrant article was passed concerning solar power in Lee. It was Article 21, and it read, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to grant an easement/license on property owned by the town for the purpose of installing a solar panel array on or adjacent to the public safety complex or the transfer station in connection with a proposed solar power purchase agreement with an option to purchase the array for a term no longer than 35 years." The proposal, the article, the warrant article was approved from 15 to 82. In other words, 84%. I think that vote shows that the townspeople are pretty strongly in favor of the solar array. The 2018 proposal was not adopted because of concerns over net metering. But now, I think we understand how net metering works. Four years ago, solar power was quite new to me. I did not understand how it worked. And now, I have a better idea. It took me a long time to find out. It doesn't hit you over the head. The trick to covering the cost of the power from the power company... Okay, wait, I back up a little bit. What is net metering? A net meter measures how much the... How much power you're buying from the power company. And it also measures how much power the solar array would be producing. And your goal is to have the solar... When the solar array is functioning, when the sun is out, it's producing excess power. And the excess power will help to pay down the costs that we get from the power company. All right, so now, when the array is producing power, it will be offsetting the full $0.19 per kilowatt that the power company will be charging at our facility. So, in other words, that's power... When the solar array is producing full power, it's going right to the transportation, the transfer station, and it's being used right away. When the sun is down and... Oh, wait, let me go back. All right, now, during that time, we'll be producing excess power. And that excess power will be credited at $0.108. That's the net metering rate. So, that's lower than what we're paying for the power, which would be $0.19. Now, the reimbursement is lower. And the reason we can still cover the cost is because we can't... Revision will just add enough solar panels to produce enough excess power to cover the costs of the power company. And it works, because solar power is the cheapest way to produce electricity. I mean, think about it. The fuel is free. You don't have to get it from the ground, refine it, and transport it to where you want. So, you could save a lot of money. I just want to talk a little about how we get the savings, all right? To start off with, we have to have electricity. That's a stranded cost for us. So, we have to have the power. So, if we save any money on that power, we can use the rest of the money that we're not spending, put it in the bank, and use it for something else. To me, it's the same as an investment. The system will pay for itself in 15 years if we choose option two, which you'll see in a few minutes from Rachel and Revision. After, after the array is paid for, basically through savings, it's kind of like, for a certain way, because it's paid for through savings. And then, it will continue to generate savings for another 25 years, which is considerable. We don't have too much left here. You're going to see that if the town chooses option two, which is to buy the array in six years, the expected price is going to be $144,000. If you do the math, that's about $3,600 a year for 40 years. Doesn't sound like a lot. And it's also about $10 a day. So, one last comment. I believe that taking action to help avoid a climate catastrophe is the right thing to do. I believe that the vote by the townspeople of Lee in 2018 shows that most people here agree. But regardless of that, this proposal makes sound business sense and will save us money. So, let's save money and help turn the global warming bus around before it runs over all of us. Thank you.
Ready for us?
Here is Rachel from Revision, Rachel Eads.
Thank you very much, Lou, for the intro. Do you have a microphone? Yes. We're being recorded.
You can come down to that table if it's easier for you to... Pretty sensitive.
It's warming up. Hello, everyone. Apologies to those who I have my back too. But thank you all for having us here. Thanks to the select board. Thanks for the work of the Energy Committee and all of your dedication over the years to help bring clean energy to the town of Lee. Certainly, I'm happy for Revision. I'm very excited to be here to speak to you about this really concrete opportunity that you guys have on hand. Again, my name is Rachel. I work out of our Brentwood branch, just down the road. And I have with me James Manzer, our commercial sales director, in a company-wide role. So, we'll be here to talk you through this proposal and then answer any questions that you may have. I'm sorry. For inspiration there, I thought that's just a fire station in Nashua, New Hampshire, show what rooftop array elsewhere in the state looks like. First of all, I just want to introduce you briefly to Revision. I know for those of you who've got the pre-read packet, this will be brief for you. But for those who are in attendance today, who are we and why are we here talking to you? We are two of over 350 co-owners of the Revision business. We've been around since 2003, so nearly 20 years, building clean energy systems, over 12,000 in the region. But since 2017, the four founders transitioned the company to 100% employee-owned company. So, you're looking at two owners of the business right here. And we're also proud to be a certified B Corporation. I mentioned I work in Brentwood. We have five branches across the region, our other New Hampshire, one is in Enfield, two in Maine, and one in North Dakota, Mass. And we're proud to be the number-one rated rooftop solar installer in New England. Our mission is to empower our community to overcome the environmental, economic, and social inequity caused by fossil fuels. So, our kids and grandkids can enjoy New England's clean air, water, and land, just like we do. And that's something I know we share in common with probably everybody here in this room. As I mentioned, we're proud to be an award-winning company. I won't take time to shoot our own horn here. But we've also been proud to partner with some of the biggest companies and brands in New England, as well as a number of nonprofits who you may have heard about. And finally, as Lou said, a number of municipalities in the region, both New Hampshire, Maine, and Massachusetts. There's a lot of case studies on our website. I've included a couple here. But definitely do feel free to reach out to your peers in other towns and see how their solar journeys have gone. And finally, before I get into the specifics of the Lee project, I just want to throw this slide up there. As we know, there are endless environmental reasons to go solar. But I think as a town, you guys are doing your due diligence, looking at the costs. And certainly, the economics of this project are one of the reasons. It makes good sense for the town of Lee. And this chart here shows 20 years of New Hampshire electricity costs for commercial, which is the blue line in the middle. That's where you guys would fall in as a municipality. This is overall cost of electricity. And you can see it only goes one direction, from 2002 to 2022, and it will keep going. And it's, the chart generally looks the same. You squint your eyes and make that a national chart. You make it past 20 years, the next 20 years. That kind of rate of growth is pretty consistent. And unfortunately, I don't think they'll be offering free electricity anytime soon. So, let's get into the specifics of your proposal. I also have a handout for those of you... We have some to share for the audience. Would you mind passing those around for us, guys? It's just a copy of the proposal, so you have the numbers in front of you. And also, there are five additional slides from the PowerPoint. If you take one, there's five additional slides that weren't in the pre-read.
Oh, the additional slides, all right.
They're basically answers to some of the questions that popped up during the Energy Committee meeting. So, I wanted to include them. But yeah, you guys will have seen the majority of this. Just wanted you to have everything right in front of you. So, what does this project look like? This is an aerial shot of the transfer station, right around the corner. Here. Yeah, these are the black and white ones. Apologies. Apologies everyone else at Brentwood, who tried to use the printer after me. Yeah, feel free to pass them around and share. They'll make a bit more sense as we go along. But the first four pages are the details of the full proposal. And then, the final 67 slides are slides that weren't in the pre-read that are extra detail. So, this is an aerial shot of the transfer station right around the corner from us here today. You can see that lovely southwest-facing roof. I had the opportunity to visit the site on April 1st and take a look at the structure of the building, at the transformer infrastructure, at the meter, at the utility pile, utility room, and do an assessment of the infrastructure that was there. And also, what we could potentially do from a solar perspective. Always good to revisit. I know we looked at it four years ago. Not too much changed in terms of the roof. But that site visit is really important, along with the utility bills, which were provided by the town. Thank you very much for that. And that's just a summary there of those four buildings. As Lou mentioned, there are four town buildings on New Hampshire Electric Co-op territory: transportation, safety complex, salt shed, and highway department annex buildings. So, the array will be hosted on the transfer station roof. But with group net metering, which we'll talk about in a minute, all four of those properties can be included in terms of electric costs that you're helping to offset. So, this is an engineer's rendering of what your solar array will look like. It's a 92.4-kilowatt system. That's 231 400-watt panels producing DC electricity and four inverters that convert DC to AC, which is what all of our appliances are using. That array will produce 101,970 kilowatt-hours of clean electricity in year one. And for those, I'm sure it's probably a little small to see, but you can generally see the bell curve of, in that graph, on the left-hand side. And that shows production by month of the year. So, we know the solar is produced by the sun. So, naturally, in our summer months, where we have the longest daylight hours, you get the most solar production. An important thing to note about this production model is that it's specific to your building. So, exactly where you are on the globe and the tilt of the roof. So, things like snow cover are already built in. We know we have beautiful snowy winters here in New England. In fact, that's one of the things we're trying to protect with this project of our ski industry and everything that goes along with it. So, hopefully, we'll continue to have snowy winters, just like we have for the 30 years of weather data that go into this model. So, you don't need to worry about climbing up on the roof and brushing out the solar panels or anything that's already built into the model, so you know exactly what to expect. A 0.5% D-rate of the panels is also built in. So, this should give you a really good idea, even though obviously, none of us can predict the weather. And unfortunately, it is probably a conservative model, just because we have seen historically less snow than we did 30 years ago. But again, hoping to protect that with this array. So, what will the components of your rate be? Obviously, we have solar panels. There'll be Q-cell panels, look like that on the left. Those are warranted for 25 years, along with the racking. The inverters, as I mentioned, that's what converts it to AC. You'll have four of those. Those are warranted for slightly less time, about 12 years. So, as part of the model, we've put in a replacement of inverters around year 20, which is pretty standard there. Really, the workhorses of the system. At the bottom there is the racking. So, that's what attaches the panels to the roof. And then, the power optimizers attach to the back of each panel. I don't know if some of you are familiar with solar, maybe from years ago or in fact, old strings of Christmas lights, how when something happened in Harlem, they would all go down. That problem's actually been solved in solar technology by those power optimizers that optimize each panel. So, if there's snow, for example, still remaining on one corner of the array, the rest of the array will be able to be producing. These are some images of what rooftop arrays we've installed of the state. As you can see, it's all in all types of buildings, different pitches of roofs, but very similar, particularly the one in the bottom right, to what yours will look like. So, you can get an idea of what the inverters look like in the wild. These are some shots. You guys will only have four, but probably the image is the bottom left. The section of the transfer station building right by the meter is probably a great location for them. They're rated for both indoor and outdoor install. You just need enough space for the four of them. And finally, I want to show just two specific projects that are very close to what the transfer station will look like. This is actually another transfer station in St. George in Maine. And then, one that I just drove by on my way here from my home in Northwood is the Town of Nottingham Fire Station. Very similar size, similar building, everything about it, metal roof, the pitch, all that. So, if any of you are driving 15 minutes around the corner and want to see something very similar, the Town of Nottingham has installed it on their fire station. This is a sample construction timeline, so you can have an idea of how long this would take. Hopefully, we'll be able to move quickly on a project like this and get started in some of the very first steps, which include utility and connection applications. And that actually probably takes the most time in terms of duration and weeks. But the actual install would only take a matter of one or two weeks. And finally, I wanted to bring up operations and maintenance. Solar is a brilliant technology, because there's no moving parts. So, it's very limited. Operation maintenance needed. But it is good to check in on the array, make sure it's producing. You can follow it on... I have an app on my phone for my own array at home. But we do offer operation and maintenance. Revision is a full-service company, everything from the design, the commissioning, installation. Our co-owners will be building the array all the way to operations and maintenance. So, it is something we recommend, but it is optional. So, the town could decide when they are owners of the array, if they wanted to enter into an annual operations/maintenance contract of whatever level they choose. All right, so we get to the good stuff, which is how do we pay for this beautiful system? So, solar arrays are not cheap. We are constructing a power plant on the roof of the building. But one of the things that causes a challenge for other towns or nonprofits or basically non-taxpaying entities is how to avail the incentives that exist for solar, because they are tax incentives. So, taxes on entities can't access the investment tax credit and accelerated depreciation. If you can't access those, basically, you're left with high upfront capital expenditure. So, outright ownership just results in a really long payback time. So, the solution to this is something called a power purchase agreement. That's where the host municipality, so the town of Lee, licenses the roof for solar to a mission-aligned investor. The investor builds, owns, and operates the array and sells the solar power back to the town for at or less than utility rates. Beginning in year six, the town may purchase the solar array at a significant discount. And this is designed to have you purchase the array. You don't have to, but you get the best savings the sooner you purchase it. So, just to talk through this in a bit more detail, there's basically two players in a power purchase agreement. You have your impact investor, and you have the town. The role of the impact investor through Revision is to provide the capital. They form a solar LLC, so like Town of Lee Transportation LLC, contract with Revision to design and install the solar array. And they own and operate it for five or more years. And they have to own it for those five years, because they recruit their upfront investment through selling electricity back to you guys and through taking that federal tax credit and the accelerated depreciation. They pass on the savings by selling the array back to the town in year six or later. Again, that's optional. But worst-case scenario, if you're never able to buy the array, you continue on with the PPA for the term, 25 years. And then, the array could be gifted to you, because it basically has no value at that point for the investor. It could be decommissioned and removed, whatever you choose at that point. But ideally, you're able to purchase it much sooner than that. From the town's perspective, your role in the PPA is to license the roof for the solar array. You sign a PPA contract with the impact investor, and that's using a National Energy Labs template. So, it's been designed by a third party to be in the interest of both developers and nonprofits who are taking part. You purchase all the solar electricity produced by your array on site at the rate stipulated in the PPA contract. Have the option to purchase the array in year six or later at fair market value. That can't be set in advance, because then the IRS considers it a lease. But we have an estimate included in this model of what fair market value will be, and that's that $140,000 that Lou mentioned. And finally, the way to maximize your cost savings is by owning and operating the solar array, which does have a full 40-year commercial lifespan. So, just briefly, who are these investors? They are our impact partners, who we've had the pleasure of working with over 100 local nonprofits, over 200 different PPA projects. And essentially, they are willing to take a lower rate of return than, say, a standard investment, because they're doing this for mission-motivated reasons. They're doing this to cut climate pollution and contribute. So, we have some wonderful partners, portfolios of PPAs, and we've done a lot of these, basically. So, this is the financial overview. This is on page one of the handouts that I've provided to you. So, if you can't see it, it should be on a page working its way around to you. But the best part about this financial overview is probably the first two lines, because they say zero. The upfront cost to Town of Lee of a solar array in a PPA is zero. The maintenance cost is zero. So, maintenance sits with the owner of the array. And the Town of Lee can go solar with no upfront cost, which is brilliant. It's why this PPA structure can help make it happen for towns that don't pay taxes. The year-one PPA rate in this model is $11.73 per kilowatt-hour. There's an escalator starting in year two of 2%, which is in line with inflation. And the term could be five to 25 years. We've modeled this at a 25-year term. I'll skip one line there. So, the upfront cost of the system is $230,000. The estimate for fair market value at year six is $144,900. So, you can see the substantial discount the town will be able to achieve by going the PPA route. In terms of projected savings, I do want to flag that the savings are very modest at the start when you're part of the PPA. The savings really start to accelerate once you're able to own the system. So, estimated savings in year one to five, only about $1,000 for the town. In year six buyout, the cost, taking out those savings, would be $143,000. I've modeled in that operations and maintenance contract that I mentioned. That is totally optional. I've included it in the model. And worst-case scenario, if the town entered the PPA, continues to buy that fixed electricity cost... This is one of the good benefits of this, is taking away uncertainty. So, the town will know exactly what to budget for electricity in the PPA. And those savings would add up to $39,000. With the year-six buyout, after 25 years, savings would be up to $148,000. And for the commercial lifespan of the panels, nearly half a million dollars saved by the Town of Lee. For those who like graphs, we have a couple coming up. You can pick your favorite. This one just shows on a line graph what those different options look like. So, the dark blue line that starts at the bottommost would be is if the Town of Lee wanted to spend $230,000, buy the array outright. But the orange line is sort of the recommended route, which is going to that PPA, so no cost really, or no cost at all to the town, but minimal savings out to year six. Purchase the array, as I mentioned, pay for itself by year 15. And then, the savings are the most of any of the options. And then, finally, the light blue line is if you took the PPA to the 25-year term. For those who like column graphs, we have... That cost of electricity leveledized over the 40 years. So, when you take it all in, what's electricity going to cost me over these 40 years, if you just stick with the utility or if we go solar? So, in the last, we have the solar options, those three that I just mentioned. PPA if you buy it at year six, PPA if you never buy it, and what if you bought it in cash? And as you can see, there are significantly less than the cost of electricity from the utility today or the utility over time, with a 2.5% escalator built in for utility inflation, which matches that graph I showed you at the beginning. Now here's where we start to differ from the packet that you guys got. So you have closer-up versions if this is hard to see. I just wanted to flag that to you. I'm not trying to sneak in any slides here. The next five are all responses to some of the great questions we got during the committee meeting. So I don't know if John's here in the audience, but I want to thank him for flagging that the blue bars were not pulling through properly on the initial version set. So well spotted, John, thank you. It was just the blue bars, and they're correct in the table. So apologies if that included any, caused any confusion. But I took the opportunity in correcting that error to split this out into two different versions. The first shows load analysis and solar offset, looking at just the transfer station. So the blue bars on here are the transfer station's facility consumption for just that one building. And the orange is the solar generation. As you can see, the solar is overproducing versus what's used in the transfer station. So 392% of the transfer station's needs would be offset by solar. But if we add in those other four co-op buildings, so the building we're in right now, safety complex, and then the salt shed and the highway department are quite small, you get to about 81% offset. So you look at the total electricity used in a year by the co-op buildings, the solar would offset 81% of that electric need. Also, in answer to your question, this one was from Dawn. So you were asking about what the bill would look like once you take part in that metering. So this is actually taken directly from the COOP's website, it's publicly available. And they provide a residential example. So caveat, this will just kind of give you a sense of what it looks like. But in that metering, you end up with two lines for each element of your bill. So again, apologies if it's kind of hard to see, but basically, any of your kilowatt-hour charges will have a positive and a negative number. So how much was delivered and how much was exported? And again, if we think about just the transfer station's usage, you're going to have a lot exported. So you're going to have that discount number on a lot. But if we lumped in all the buildings, it'll produce 81%. So I don't want you to bog down in this, because this is just an example provided by the co-op. But just so you know what to expect, you'll have basically a positive and negative number showing the cost and then the credits based on kilowatt hours that were either exported or delivered. And anything used behind the meter doesn't appear at all on the bill as either a charge or a credit. So I have two more slides. We talked about in the energy committee meeting, a bit about what does this investment look like? And Lou provided some headline numbers there, which are brilliant. And this is just breaking down into the very detail of what that 81% looks like over time. So you guys are going to spend for that amount of kilowatt hours over 40 years, $720,000 for that 81% electricity supply. So that's if you do nothing. I mean, that money has to be spent. As Lou said, you guys, we need to have the lights on. We need to be doing things in the Town of Lee. Whereas, that's fixed, that's going to happen. The entire all-in PPA cost, so that includes six years of the PPA rate, estimated buyout, that inverter replacement I spoke of in year 20, and 34 years of an ONM contract, adds up to $260,000. Now that's not a small chunk of change by any means. But in comparison, it's maybe a third of what you would be spending in total on electricity, which again, we need no matter what. So those savings, that nearly half a million dollars can be put towards whatever you want in the Town of Lee. And that's a really cool opportunity, thinking about future expansion of town projects you want to do. So hopefully, this is an interesting way to think about it. Again, it's all the same information, just kind of showing it different ways. And one final way of showing it is we talked about that investment. You know, what else could the Town of Lee do with their $144,000? So I just really quickly ran the IRR, internal rate of return on this project over 30 years. I quickly Googled stock market rate of return over 30 years. And yeah, you could take that $144,000 and invest in the stock market. But you could also invest it in the building around the corner from Massey Elementary School and producing clean electricity for the Town of Lee. So I just want to finish with a couple of slides around community engagement, so ways that Town of Lee can bring this project to the wider community. We've worked with a number of towns and nonprofits on ribbon cuttings and other events to raise awareness and really share the good work you're doing in the town with the wider public, whether it's town officials, state officials, residents, et cetera. Our marketing team can help you guys with media outreach. I know we were planning some potential electric car stuff over here at the transfer station. So there's, you know, potential there to say, you know, as part of our solar project, you know, we're offsetting this added electricity load, the vehicles, you know, powered by the town's solar arrays, et cetera. Definitely recommend sharing the monitoring. Like I said, you can use digitally. One town does this really well, it's the Town of Lebanon. You can go and see they have a number of arrays, and you can click right on it and see live what they're producing at that very moment and also over time. Or we could do a poster or something like that to put up with the transportation. So when people come by once a week with their trash and recycling, they can be reminded that the building is powered by clean solar energy. And finally, education. Education is a big passion of ours here at Revision. I know the kids at Massey School, one of my friends' kids go, already have, find this stuff as part of the instruction. So we'd love to partner with you guys to really expand on that, help them learn about what's happening at the building right around the corner from them. And this cool yellow dude on here is Sun Squatch, who's our climate creature. And he's just part of our education programs for kids. So happy to bring him along for ribbon cuttings and for events at the school. And that's it. Thank you all for your patience. I'm sure questions are popping up. So I'd love to hear from the board or from other members, people in the room. What questions can we help you answer about the solar project?
Questions for the board? No?
I have all of my questions answered.
I believe that we had to invest money in fixing, I'm sorry, I was on the phone when we had this conversation, the transformer or something needed to be fixed as this transfer station for this to happen.
Increasing the power, yeah.
Correct. And that's also for the new machinery we're using down the road. So they, this needs a, I'm not sure what the terms are for 400 ampere, then we were actually looking at a 600.
We're at 200 ampere right now, which is sort of a hefty residential system. And this proposal would bring us to 400 ampere, which would be much more in line with running commercial.
And Steve has said that going forward, 600 ampere is what we actually need for the machinery we're going to be using for the transportation as we're upgrading.
I think there was actually some confusion about that. I think Stephen mentioned 660 volt, which I think probably has to do with 3.5's power as much as the average, but not being an electrician.
Would the 400 ampere be enough then, is that what you're saying?
I can't speak for Steve, but it would be a 100% improvement from what we have now.
Yeah, currently, we're short things, so regardless of this project.
Difference is that the transfer station has 3.5's power, so it's not residential. So that's a big difference. So any questions from anyone in the audience? Oh my goodness. Oh, yes.
Yeah, I got a question. So you're talking about putting solar panels on the.
Welcome.
Hey! So I have.
Steven Edwards.
Oh, Scott Morrell, Fort Fegro, Lulane, Ayesha, 03861.
What's your shoe size? We need that, too. No, they're fine.
Nine and a half on a good day. So I have a question. So you're talking a 40-year plan for the, I love, by the way, I love solar. I love solar. Recycling solar panels, not so much. How long are the batteries good for? And are we going to be responsible, being Town of Lee, to replace those? And also, has anybody thought about putting solar panels here on this big building as well? And as far as the transfer station, if we're putting solar panels on the transfer station, is that money that's being saved by the transfer station usage going to be going back to the transfer station? Is it, or is that going to be going back into the general fund?
Great questions.
That's it?
Great.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You can ask. Come back again more.
Thank you very much. I will, between James and I, will answer the first two, but I will leave it to you guys in terms of how you're going to use those savings. I mean, free puppies for everyone in Lee, sounds good.
Wait, what, free puppies?
You can do whatever you want with those savings. But to answer your first two, really good questions. I'll start with the second one, actually. We have definitely in the past looked at this building, sorry, I think the microphone's not working. And did look at it again in April. There are a few challenges with this building. First of all, I mean, you, with enough time and money, you can put solar anywhere. You can put it on the remotest island. But unfortunately, there's a few challenges up here just regards to the roof shape and open spaces, and we looked at ground mounts, but the cost of land clearing, trenching, et cetera, just basically made it cost prohibitive. Like you want to do something that makes good sense, it basically wouldn't have worked out for a PPA for the town just because of those added costs. But great question. And also, you know, as things change, years down the line, the Town of Lee can also, you know, do more solar in the future and look at other sites. As we mentioned, lots of towns have done multiple projects. But this one, unfortunately, at the moment, is not cost-effective to build on between roof shape and some of the elements of the ground. In terms of second question around recycling, I might defer to you, James, on that one for recycling panels.
Hello, yeah, James Ranser with Revision. So batteries, this actual array doesn't have any batteries. This is grid-tied, so we're tying right into your electrical infrastructure. And the electricity is either used in real time or goes out into the grid. The neighbors use it, and then that's how it's credited around to the other accounts. Solar panels are typically glass and aluminum, which are actually quite easy to recycle. And there's a company in New Hampshire that does recycling. 40 years from now, you know, what will the world look like? You know, how will resources be, you know, will we still be pulling them out of the ground as raw resources, or will, you know, we actually get our act together and start recycling in a real way? I think is an open question. But at the end of the day, the recycling, if you purchase the array in year six, it's your array as the town, and so it would be the responsibility of the town to decommission it. But again, the two major components are glass and aluminum, which even today are fairly easy to recycle. And then copper is no worries. And if anybody's had a, you know, built a new home, you know that you have to guard that thing 24/7 to keep the copper in the wall. So a lot of value in the materials that we're using, and they're pretty basics, readily available and easily to recycle. But great question. I hope that was helpful.
The third question, that's something we'd have to talk about, but most likely it would go as a credit against our bills. So the line I know for that particular cost would just be reduced.
We're reducing taxes of everyone in the town.
Steven? Reduce what?
Reducing taxes, yes. Our big favorite. But puppies are second up. We can talk about it later.
Any other questions from anybody? Go ahead.
I don't have a. Corvwalk, 38 Virchell Road. I don't have a comment for the moment, but first I'd like to read a letter. My husband, Bill Homm, is the former chair of the Conservation Commission. And Bill came down with COVID this weekend. So he had planned to be here, but he's not. So he wrote a letter that he'd like me to read. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, over the past many years, the Town of Lee has consistently made decisions to protect the local environment by acquiring land or conservation easements on land having high natural resource value. Lee Select Boards and voters have done the right thing by protecting our local environment. Tonight, you're being asked to do the right thing, not just for the local environment, but for our planet. Faced with the extreme challenges of climate change, each and every one of us has a moral obligation to do whatever we can to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. Revision's solar proposal gives us all an excellent opportunity to do the right thing for the planet and at no cost. Please approve Revision's solar proposal. Your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren will view this act as a historic moment. Thank you. And I'd just like to echo what Bill said. I think the time is long past. Everybody around us has solar. All municipalities, almost all of them have solar now. Lee has been kind of behind the ball on this. We have a plan. It's not a perfect plan. It'd be great if we could get 100% back, but we can't. But perhaps down the road, we'll find a way to add another array that would help offset the rest of it. But for now, this is what we've got, and it looks great. And I think we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please wish him well.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? I have two questions.
Yeah.
I left mine to the end. One of the things they kind of, at least for me, on the last proposal you guys had, is the whole thing that the shut-off, if there's a fire at the facility, you've got something in there now that automatically cuts out. Can you speak, can somebody speak to that?
Yeah, you're probably best to try to pack the answers, but yes.
All right. Fire safety is important. So we follow the National Fire Safety Code, which requires us to have what's called a rapid shutdown device on the site. We talked about the different components that go into the solar array. One of them was a DC optimizer that goes underneath each or every other panel. And so when you shut power off or when it notices a grid interruption, each of those optimizers on the roof go down, and so we stop making electricity. It cuts the circuit, opens the circuit. And so it allows fire access. Folks, if they accidentally put an ax through a solar panel, we're not making electricity, and so no harm to them.
Okay. The other question I had is, you've been out there. Did somebody look at the structural in terms of it'll take the weight of those particular panels? Can somebody speak to that?
Yeah, we, as part of the development of the process, projects, including an electrical engineer to get everything out to the co-op to perform interconnection, we'll also do a structural analysis with a structural engineer. Very, very typically, any, you know, building that's been built in the last, you know, number of decades that handles the snow load that we have in New Hampshire is going to pass, you know, because all we're doing is adding about three to four pounds per square foot with the solar array. Whereas, you know, the snow load is, you know, typically the 60 pounds per square foot that is required to build a building in New Hampshire.
Somebody expect our roof to last the 40 more years?
We do. I had spoken with the code enforcement officer and also done some checking with a couple of industry people. And our roof went on, I believe, in 2003 and is estimated to have a 40- to 70-year life expectancy with 50 and 55 being quite typical.
And how old is it now?
It was in 2003. It's not quite 20 years. I believe it's 18 years, actually, when I checked the 2003, 2004.
My name is Nada Kane. I live at 222 Lane and Lee. I must say that I first learned about net metering in 1995, sitting on the Science, Technology, and Energy Committee. And we continued to debate this and tried to inform the public and inform the members of the legislature, who had a hard time understanding it, as we heard earlier. And through the years, we've pecked, we then, we, for the 21 years I was there, pecked away at improving the situation and finally finding a way to permit local towns who are not otherwise enabled to do it. And it is, it's been back and forth, and I'm so grateful to see it happening now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing I would ask, I'm in favor of this. The only thing I would ask, can you run this agreement by our legal counsel just to check that out? I don't know if you've done that already.
I have not done that already, but I did research the prior agreement that you looked at. And you had, indeed, had significant legal input. And I think that probably using that tablet, unless the proposal has changed drastically, we could have legal take a quick look at it this time as opposed to the in-depth that they did in 2018 or 19 and be able to do it fairly inexpensively for us.
Okay. And then you can work with Rachel to finalize whatever the document is?
Yes, with the interest signatures, yes.
Okay. That sounds good.
I didn't, I don't think it was mentioned, but I believe, oh. Lou Lebrun, 14 Lane. I don't believe it was mentioned that the proposal price is good for 30 days, I believe. So after the 30 days, prices are changing fast right now, so they can't guarantee it. so they can't guarantee it. So it'd be good to get right on it.
Can I take the, are you two ladies in favor of this?
Yeah, I will say the savings of like $1,000 in the first five years, so don't expect a huge change in taxes.
No puppies.
No puppies in the first five years. But, I mean, any savings plus the planet, I think, is the way to go. But don't expect a huge decrease in taxes.
Can we motion to go forward with that?
I think you can just do it. When the agreement comes back, then we can have a vote. I don't think you need one right at the moment. What do you think, Andy? Do you leave them?
Up to the board.
To the ladies, if you want to do one, that's fine.
Absolutely.
I think we want to see the, I want to see the agreement and make sure it's passed by legals. Sounds like it's...
Can you make a motion to move forward with the process?
Great.
We also need to get a quote to upgrade the system. As I understand, it has to be done anyways, but we should probably make sure we're approving that at the same time.
So how about if we task Steve and the town administrator to get the quote for the cost upgrade, the service at the transfer station? And maybe you and Steve can work out... I'm sorry?
Do we, yes, for that last time?
I don't know what we did.
I can't recall either. I know we had some discussion about 660, 400, and 200, and I did that for change.
How about if we task them officially with doing that, and then they can figure out what it is that they actually need there? And then whatever that particular cost happens to be. If you want a motion, Katrina, you can, it's up to you.
I motion that we go forward with this PPA proposal from Revision Energy for solar at the transfer station.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll lose in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So you can move that forward.
I'll be in touch with you, Rachel, in the next contact?
Yep.
Really appreciate everyone coming out tonight and being here. It's really wonderful to see you. You're always welcome to come join us if you have a meeting. So please remember that, that we're the best people that's come tonight.
All right, and don't forget your USP drives.
Thank you. Well done.
One of the things that Mike Splosky's doing, one of the things we might want to have, this one is an HDMI cable. It would go from here to wherever the person is presenting. Because then they could use their own equipment to do the projection. That would be great. Maybe 25 feet maybe?
Thank you.
Then we could plug it in over there and just run it into the light. As long as she doesn't take it out.
I can make arrangements to tape it or tune it.
I'll try to keep her rolling around again.
Plus, how does service get into that little box? How do they get, maybe, I don't know, just the box?
Denise and I tried to figure that out about a month ago and gave up when we were still pulling cable. We hadn't reached there into.
It's got to go simply, right? So...
I can get Steve to...
All right. All right. All right, that's number four, real business. Town administrator?
Yes, I'll start with personnel policy. And this came out of a discussion that we had in non-public a couple of weeks ago. We're not talking about a specific employee, so I left it on the agenda for public session. There was some question as to what we require for exempt employees with regard to reporting for time they take off and time away. And when I went through the personnel policy, Lee follows a fairly common federal standard, which is part of the Federal Labor Act, and requires exempt salaried employees to report when they take more than four hours of leave away from the job. And typically, the way that works, you would probably have a discussion with them, but technically, you could have an exempt salaried employee that took four hours on either end of the day for a week and would still be in compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. Typically, you wouldn't expect that. But I think the discussion we had was if somebody, I, things that come to mind are, in my experience, when we had the ice storm in this part of New Hampshire or when we had a tornado in the town I live in, we expected a number of employees to be on duty, you know, some of them 36, 48 hours straight in some cases. And clearly, four hours of leave without having to take that as vacation or sick might not cover that. But I think my recommendation to the select board would be to stay as we are. We're in compliance with the Federal Labor Standard Act. Our language is right there, perfectly correct, and handle situations on a position-by-position basis as you come into them. I mean, clearly, what comes to mind would be the DPW. You know, if we have a three-day blizzard or two storms in a row in a week, the board may want to intercede and say, hey, you know, we'd like to give you a couple of days and not make you use vacation time to take that. But that would be my recommendation to the board, is to leave it as it is.
How can the board do that if we are only meeting every other week? So how do we, we wouldn't be able to do it?
Well, I think you'd have to change the status of the leave. You know, Denise and I would track, could track what people felt they needed to take. And then the board, the select board could decide, you know, whether they wanted to make the employee take that as vacation time away or whether you thought the situation warranted you stepping in and just giving them some time.
So you could do that after the fact?
You could.
But then that person is not sure if they're going to get that. So now they're going to, you know, don't want to use vacation time. I don't get it. That's uncomfortable.
I just think, given federal labor law, it's very difficult to build into that beyond the four hours. There are actually two specific cases, I believe in 2014, that came back to that four hour, which is essentially half a day cut off.
Yeah, I also wanted to know if we, we kind of think of a five-day, you know, work day, week. So if somebody's planning to work Monday through Friday, but then there's a, let's say, some kind of awful accident and fire and police are there, and they're working Sunday all day, it wouldn't make sense that they would still have to be scheduled to do a five-day work week? Because Monday, Friday, when they've worked...
Well, as an exempt salary employee, that would be the case. You would be expected to. And that's why the exempt salary employees are generally paid more than...
Is there any way that when somebody works a day that they weren't scheduled as a day off, that it can be understood that that day, that there'll be a different day that they can take off?
You could incorporate, you know, it would be comp time. It would be more in the lines of flex time, which is parsing words. But you could incorporate something like that into the language again. So you, what we've got in place right now is pretty much the V-model for the FLSA.
It's based on a Monday through Friday work week, though. And what concerns me, I worked in retail for a very long time, and we always had a deal that if you were scheduled on certain days and you had to shift, whatever, they were swappable. So it wasn't a, it's one thing if you, you know, if you have to work extra hours, I get that, that's, I understand. But if somebody's worked a day that they weren't supposed to be working, it seems that's taken a day away of their time off off.
Right. The general comment, when you begin our employee policy, when you get to the time section, chapter three, it says that it is understood that most full-time employees' work week is based on 40 hours.
Right.
It doesn't put any teeth beyond that, but it just says that we, you know, the town expects that you'll work 40 hours. And then it clearly goes on to say that the exempt employees, which would be myself, the DPW director, the police chief, the fire chief, I believe that would be it.
Yeah, I, I, I have the same concern, Katrina. Because this is outside of normal working hours, so who's to say what normal working hours are for the police chief?
Right, that's really unfair.
It's not a day through Friday, 95. That's not normal for them.
So you can't just say that, you know, too bad you have to work these hours too, plus you came in on your, because that's, because what we want is we want our employees to have time with their family, time at home, time to relax, time to de-stress. So I would want to make sure that there's a way that if they have a day that they've given up of their, that was scheduled for them, that they can get that back in the week without having to use vacation or wait to see...
Right now, they could do that by virtue of half-days. They could, you know, if they had, the police chief had worked all day Sunday, he could say, hey, I'm going to be out Monday morning. I might be out Tuesday morning, too. That's not, if it's four hours or less, it's not a reportable offense. But it's not an offense. It's not a reportable, it's not a reportable leave. It could be an offense if you did it incorrectly. But that's where it stands. If you take a full day, you have to account for four hours of that sometimes. And as suggested, the accounting could be to come to the select board and say, I worked three days straight. I needed to take eight hours off. Please don't take my vacation time for it.
I think that those, those employees that we're talking about as heads of departments that we have put our full faith in should really not have to do.
I agree.
I think that if in a week you work 40 hours and you want to take off six hours, I mean, as long as your work's getting done, you've had to be work three days straight on an ice storm, I don't feel like we should be penny-pinching, hour-pinching.
Right, we don't want someone to work a 24-hour shift and not, you know, just so they don't have to work the rest of the week or something. But we do, we want somebody to...
I think the solution, I guess, to work around that would be to increase the four-hour non-reporting limit to eight hour. And if you felt that was being abused, you could...
Revisit it that way.
You need to revisit the policy or visit the employee specifically.
Yeah.
But you would have to do something along those lines.
But you also mentioned that these here are flex time, right? Like this idea that you work, you have to work 40 hours, get all your stuff done. Does it really matter to us if you're working four days or five days? Does it mean...
It would depend on the board. There are a couple of ways to do that. Right now, you have some employees that have comp time. Employees can take up to 21 hours a year, is my recollection, for comp time. Hourly employees in the Town of Lee. That doesn't apply to exempt employees.
Of working overtime to save the town.
Of the, of the, all the employees that this is applicable to, we have 25% of that particular group here. Maybe we could ask that to get a person. Is there an opinion on this?
Sure.
Thank you. If you'd like to share that.
If you'd like to share that.
So I totally understand the policy. If the clock is ticking properly the whole time, it's fine. You know, we know Steve works a lot of hours during the social, especially this year with the ice and everything. Since the beginning of February, when Vanessa went to the academy and we had to let somebody go, I've been doing between 50 and 54 hours a week.
Right.
So, you know, my feeling, and it's difficult to get time off, but if I get a chance to get a day,
Right.
and I take the whole day, but I got to use four hours of my vacation time when I technically already have 46 hours in, like this week, when we have meetings. So today, tomorrow, and Wednesday will all be 13-hour days. So by 8 o'clock Thursday morning, I've got my 40 hours in.
Right.
So, but I'm still, I'm still working because we get the single coverage. But if I had the opportunity to take a Friday off, then I would have to use four hours of my vacation time to do it, even though I've already got 40 plus hours in.
So if we, if we change this, because I, I think this is what you're saying, Rebecca. We hire these people, we pay them a lot of money. They're responsible for their particular departments, if you will. And they need to manage their time. If they feel that they can take off time, let them do it. And we can just deal with the aftereffects in terms of, because I don't think, well, just putting a person in the position, I don't think Chief Drashfield's going to say, geez, I work all weekend. I'm not going to come in for a whole week. You're not going to do that.
I'm just not going to...
Their very conscience is these particular people, and then it becomes a performance issue.
Right.
If they start taking off so much time and, you know, geez, yeah, I came in for two minutes on Sunday, I'll, I'm going to take off next Wednesday.
Right.
Somebody's going to notice that. Somebody's going to say something.
Somebody knows that you're not here for a whole day. And I think, I think that, I think as long as they're hitting the 40 hours and they're like, it's getting done, that we should change this to eight.
I agree.
I think that would encourage you to change it to eight rather than leave it nebulous.
Yeah, I don't like the nebulous.
And then I only, I mean, I would only want to hear about it if you start seeing them working 20-hour weeks.
Oh, you'll notice right away. Everybody will be jealous and...
Maybe that's something that makes working only a little more enjoyable, though, if you know that if you've put your time in, you know, you can...
One of the things that I will do is...
Thank you.
Just check with Naomi Butterfield and make sure that this does not run afoul of FLSA, which I get confused with FLMA.
Thank you, that sounds great.
So if you can bring back, after you get that information, maybe for the next time, what the policy would be?
Yep, I'll bring a sample.
If it's just to change reporting to eight or if there's other things that need to be tweaked.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Regarding the ARPA spending report, I did attach, Denise attached to the agenda what we've spent so far, what we earmarked. As you can see, we've spent a little over $34,000 of the $239,163.50 at this point. Clearly earmarked much more than that. Got some heating repairs and essentially the bunk room and I believe probably lumber for the museum building are included in here as well today.
Right.
And this, this spending report will continue right along.
So are any of these 11 projects under these particular amounts?
Not yet.
Like, these are the budgeted amounts. Our expenses coming in, under them, over them, about the same?
The ventilation was budgeted higher. That's a lower cost than what we originally budgeted.
Yeah, I don't believe these have been included yet, no. Certainly not the new furnaces that have not been paid for in full. And obviously, the biggest one in here would be the insulation project.
But we're right, we're within $8,000 of the amount for the year. That's actually right there.
Right, and you'll be receiving a second check in July, so...
That's great.
All right, great. So if you can, as, maybe monthly, let us know what this is so we can keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
John, did your numbers agree with us? Okay.
Yes, those, those numbers are John's numbers from the financial...
It's helpful, Steve, if you're agreeing, or we need to say something.
Corrected.
Those were the corrected ones, yes.
Thanks, John.
Next up, I had some pictures of trees between the annex and the Historical Society Building that Mr. Bullock would like to have removed. At the same time, he came back to me a day or two later, and there are also some two huge trees directly behind the hobo shed that he would like to remove. He feels could do damage to the library or the shed or the town hall.
Is that not including the one that was on someone else's property?
One of those trees, it is probably on someone else's property, and we couldn't remove it.
One of these?
The hobo shed?
Yeah, that's my understanding according to Steve, yes.
So we'd have to look into that and kind of...
So maybe we could contact...
We could contact the owner and see if they'd let us take it.
And is Steve taking these down or should we hire another service?
No, we'd be hiring a crane because in proximity to the buildings.
And how much?
That he does not have an estimate on. I would, having done a similar number of trees at my house for around ten thousand dollars, I would suspect you're looking at around ten thousand dollars, by the way.
It's, it's something we also need to hire a crane anyway, because there are some trees that have to be down other places.
Other places? I thought you did that already, no?
No, there's other ones we didn't have in mind before.
Because the renting of the crane is whatever it is for the day, that's.
Right, and so he has some that he needs to get done, and that's part of the budget he had for the highly.
He is, he is indeed gonna get hard and fast estimates for that. And part of the other problem with big old white pines, I believe one of those is a pitch pine, I'm not so sure of pitch pines, but the white pines oftentimes are rotten in the middle, so your, your best notching and prediction of where they're going may or may not work.
Well, I'd be amenable if you would get permission from the owner of, what is it?
Or not, or not cut that one, yes.
Well, if it falls, if it falls south, that's fine. If it falls north, it's gonna crush the hobo shed, so I'd be amenable to pay for, we'd rather have the other one taken down anyways, just tell the owner, we'll take it down. Are you okay with that, and get it through, right?
Nope, I will talk to Mr. Bullock tomorrow morning, and certainly approach the owner.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Okay. Library requests for electricity, and this was, the primary reason this is on here is because it involves live music for a children's concert the library would like to plan. I, I don't assume that they would use much in the way of electricity. Their initial request was to have the electricity turned on, but you do have a prohibition against live music at Lower River Park without your express permission.
This is on a Thursday, and it's from ten to twelve-thirty, since it's the middle of, oh, Sunday day.
Anything, Rebecca?
I, yeah, I can.
You're all set, right?
Members of the public.
We'll keep an eye on it, make sure it doesn't get too rowdy.
Thank you.
You know those loud kids. You know those loud fans.
You all set?
Yes. You're gonna say yes to that?
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's great.
I'm trying to read it, but I'm working on it. Jeez. I move to approve the library's request to hold a live band show at Lower River Park on Thursday, Jan-, excuse me, January, July twenty-eighth, and to approve the library's request to turn on and to turn off and provide power at the Randy Stevens Pavilion for the band to utilize for said show. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, I see, yes, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes? Any miscellaneous, Miss Deborah?
Not at this point, no, I have a couple of things for non-public, brief miscellaneous, that's it.
Great.
Regular business consent agenda items. I move to replace, or replace, remove, number seven. Other than that, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Can I say how excited I am to see how many people are volunteering to be on these committees?
Isn't it incredible?
Actually, really excited.
It's a lot of new life and excitement in the town, it's really great to see.
Good things, oh, sorry? Carry away in the emotion, but.
Good things are happening.
We still have some space on the grievance committee, and we also have space on.
Have you changed it?
You did, that's great.
Too late for which one?
Uh, that was for the creators.
Oh.
And then we have, I think the housing committees, because we still have many of them. Do we have the, the, that, that one, Billy?
I have one for me.
Okay, for the housing and housing.
She's, no, she.
You went ahead and said.
She did housing instead of.
Building.
Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a question.
I heard you say the other one.
Ouch!
Yes, she did the housing.
I was attacked. Okay. It's a big day. So community power, we're gonna need, we just approved the MOU for community power, which means we're gonna need a committee.
We're going to need a committee.
And that's how many people again?
There were, he gave some guidelines, I believe, it was, or seven.
Your time, yeah.
Ryan also signed here for the, your little power.
Thanks, Ryan, double dipping wherever possible.
Mr. Chairman, if I could mention under old business, I did have a commercial use policy listed there prior to the meeting. I would like to talk to Karen Rossi. I have both a contract agreement for parks and park programs in draft form and a commercial use in draft form, but I want to Karen to have a chance to go over those with me before I.
Because our stomachs are low. They do make delicious smelling, I have to say.
Well, the board would be okay if the town administrator and his assistant would bring snacks for us.
I don't think that that's, I think we have to bring snacks for them, for power to.
I think the pizza.
So that would really find everyone's shoe in their microphone, that's really, that's not gonna drive people.
Happy that pizza in your one, that's about the meeting, you're probably sleeping by two in the morning.
Please, if we can send you an in, if we can.
I hear about this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm like, I'm like thinking, oh, we're almost done, and then it's, oh, it's gone. I can't imagine some of them, because just sweetest and happiness from over there.
Just, just for the record, she wasn't texting her friends, we had an alarm issue at the start of the meeting.
Because, you know, I'm thinking Denise was texting her friends.
I was really concerned about that.
Yeah, that was the first thing I thought, not that it was something. Poor Linda, who's dealing with the little, well, yourself, I'm like, how you guys handle them so well? People don't even realize all the things that are happening in the town at all times. She drops her, you know.
And it wasn't the Trails Committee this time.
I know, no!
Generally, we look to them for, for.
All right, old business for skipping over, we'll do that next time. New business, whose is this, cemetery behind the library?
You had asked me to put it on the agenda.
Me? I asked you to put the cemetery?
This was, this was regarding a cleanup project for the cemetery over there.
You said, who's this?
I believe it was Saturday or Sunday. You said you'd been approached by a group that wanted to conduct a cemetery cleanup.
Yes, I vaguely remember this, but I don't remember who.
Can we just say, anyone who wants to clean up our town cemetery will agree?
Oh, do you know?
Yeah.
Someone knows, yes.
I don't remember who, somebody?
Yeah, Deb Sugarman, one thirty-five, Stevie Sono's.
I can never remember my M.S. The Trails Committee last year worked with the Reach Program from Durham.
Oh, yeah.
I forget what the name stands for, but they're middle school students. And last year, they built the two benches that we put in.
It's for the Palooza, right, the, what? It's the, something, it's like something Palooza, I'm just trying to remember what it is, volunteer something, but it's, it's like an activity where they have a day where they help the community, correct?
Yes.
Something like that. We had, we had a week with middle school students that were helping, that were helping us with, in the town for us.
Actually, the, the day that you're thinking of. The, the one you were thinking of, I believe they're actually going to come and pull mustard weed.
Perfect.
No.
So this is very different.
Different group, but.
So this is. This is the camp, right?
Yeah. This is Durham Rec puts it on.
Yes, Durham Rec puts it on.
Great.
And, and the reason they wanted us to work with them last year was because the middle school was being rebuilt. And so they didn't have a place to go, so they went to Mastway. And they liked us so much that they wanted to come back this summer, which is great, because it was a wonderful experience for everybody. And so they said, well, what other projects do you have? So the cemetery cleanup was one of them. Dennis and Chris have become very interested in the cemetery, and have been working with Randy on the history of the cemetery and who's buried there, we're gonna put a QR code there, because it's on the trail. So we were wondering if that would be possible to do a cleanup at the cemetery. That's what that was all about.
Have you, you been able to work with Phyllis White's son?
Kevin.
Kevin, thank you, on the.
Indirectly.
Okay, because he did a whole walkthrough with the Girl Scouts during the pandemic, and gave history and told a lot of stories, too, so that's a great resource.
Randy Stevens seems to be the person to know, quick side line.
Perfect.
Well, glad somebody figured out what it was.
Thank you, Dennis. Yes, I'm very much in favor of that.
Rebecca, you will give it.
Yeah.
They'll just have, you just have to be careful, because some of the stones are, they're flat, so.
Could one of the, I don't know if we have to mention this, our Chris Regan. One of the things we're thinking about besides just cleaning up is to repair some of, or replace some of the split rail, rails that have broken, so that's the only thing, great.
I think the Boy Scouts did that many, many years ago.
I believe Mike Tulsa from Tulsa's funeral home. We had taken care, our association had taken care of the one down on Leahook by Mr. Sammo's property. And he came out, was able to fix stones, and he knows somebody who can do the, the railings and everything, so.
That's great.
Who's this?
Mike Tulsa, Tulsa Funeral Home.
Okay.
I know that Steve Bullock had asked me if the Dallas of the American Revolution, Marjory Sullivan Chapter, Dave mentioned being interested in working with several of our semitaries, and he had mentioned the one that's near, I'm gonna forget, Cleland?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a place that we could, so we might wanna ask for permission, and I think it gets close to someone's boundary, but if that's an option, too, that they, that they would be willing to do.
Just remember, the cemetery trustees are in charge of cemeteries, so.
Right, so we have to.
No matter what happens, they should be informed and make sure they're okay with it as well.
I've been regularly referring people to them for the last three weeks.
Professionally, or? I noticed there's a lot of plots in there, so somebody's playing in the head, so, I don't know. Anything else on that one? No, discuss. Well, the meeting's going downhill from here anyway, so, you know. So discuss intent to cut and discuss intent to cut and intent to excavate requests. So this is from Conservation Commission, I remember that one. I, I would ask that when those particular things come in, that the Conservation Commission gets notified of those before they go out in the agenda? So when they come into the office, I don't know, do they go to you, Denise?
Go to Karen.
So I would like to ask if you two ladies are amenable, that when those come in, that they get sent to the, what is it, Conservation Commission email address, so everybody can see them? Oh, yes.
Ann Tappin on the Conservation Commission. The reason for this is that, so that we can be good stewards of the conservation easements. We are not trying to examine every intent to cut. If it's, if it has, the only ones we're interested in are either the property isn't town, isn't easement, or it's an abut to that easement. But we will figure that out, we're just asking that we can get a heads-up ASAP, so we can look at the property, say, not of interest, or just so we know something about it. Because we really do take very seriously upholding the easements. So that's the reason for it, it's not to get involved with all the intents, thank you.
So just when they come in, they can send it to the, I don't know what the address is, but.
We'll figure it out in forward, uh, both of us.
Yeah, and there's, there's not tons of them, so it's.
No.
That's refreshing, I was nervous that I was gonna get a claim on it.
Okay, go ahead.
The next one, agenda meeting postings. What I would request, there's been some confusion, we'll say. So when somebody sends in one of these in the future, can, when, whoever does it, I don't know if it's still you, Denise, or somebody else. So like, for instance, if I wanna present one for the Heritage Commission, I put in, you know, the, the thing that I wanna submit, and just when you've posted it, just email me back and just let me know that you posted it, and then that will kind of close the loop, good? And I think that would work for other people, too.
I made, Denise was really proactive on that, and we've got a two-stage authentication now, where we've asked chairs to notify both of us, and, and we will certainly be replying back. And we're also trying to encourage people to get back to, you know, three to five days' notice of meetings, that sort of thing.
Yeah, but that'd be great, because then there's positive reinforcement. Because if it gets missed, then they're gonna say, oh, well, geez, I haven't seen it, you know, then they can contact you, and say, hey, you know.
We have new, a lot of new committees, so just, yeah, so just to get us up on.
One of the things that I was talking to Mr. Tappin about, and I talked to him about it a couple of, three months ago, and this involved his wife as well, was doing some ninety-one A three training for canays, particularly with new committees coming. This is, it's particularly important to me, I've actually been to court on three occasions for, when I was on a select board, from people that were sure that we were in violation of ninety-one A three, which we weren't, but it cost the town a lot of money and us a lot of time, so, and it can be for very minor things, so.
Could we do a meeting and have it recorded, so that if somebody then comes on later, that they could then?
Yes, and the Municipal Association has training material available as well, that we could certainly.
And if people think they know, it's always good to review, because it is.
So do they have a video online someplace?
I believe they do, and I'm not sure if we have to pay additional fee for that or not. I, I fairly qualified, there's some no-cost training through the Municipal Association.
It would be nice if, when these people, because it's not just the chairs, it's the members as well. If part of the process, like we just signed some appointments tonight, that part of that particular process is they need to watch the video and become accustomed to those particular things.
It's a great idea.
As part of their kind of onboarding kind of stuff. And I agree with Katrin, and, you know, just because you saw it five years ago, doesn't mean you remember everything, so, you know, pressure would be nice.
And the, the criteria changed, too.
Exactly. You know, the current rules, and everyone's on the same page, a lot of times in meetings, we have a lot of discussions about what you have to do and not have to do, and things like that.
All right, the next one I know isn't mine.
Not me.
Not me.
Actually, you had.
I was just gonna say.
You had us to talk about it.
You had mentioned that you might wanna talk about it before the appointment, and I think at least one of the members said.
But then Katrin said.
We don't know what we're talking about.
But you're the chair, so we didn't know what to do.
Denise was gonna talk about it.
You did what you were told, but then I thought it was, okay, but that's okay.
So if, how can we talk about it if we don't know anything about it? So let's find out what we know, I guess.
I can give you a general overview of what I've seen from the paperwork.
Okay.
And that is, there are several residents in town who would like to approach you about taking over the property that runs from the Annex Building to the parish house. Incorporate both the Annex Building and the parish house in their project, remove the trees between those two structures, and build a large greenhouse that would be a for-profit butterfly sanctuary. And would also be some sort of outreach for other pollinators beyond butterflies. And that's the proposal they'd like to talk to you about. It would be a, a public-private, probably lease agreement of some sort.
That's very interesting.
Still have to solve the legal issue with the house, huh?
Possibly, what, your house, the property line?
Yes, the problem, the issue.
We should really find out what the real issue of that is, and we. They're fine.
The property line is about thirteen inches off the actual corner of the parish house, so.
And the church could say if they wanted to.
Larry has.
Right. So would this mean that they take the entire refurbishing and fixing up of the parish house into their hands, and no longer is our expense?
That I don't know, and I think that's what they would like to talk to the board about. They, the paperwork that I saw very definitely included both those buildings and the property between. And they would wanna lease the buildings and lease the property to construct the sanctuary greenhouse on.
Ah, interesting. Do you, this is not gonna be at the next meeting, right, it's maybe the one after?
I believe it's, yes, they asked us to.
Because I told you you were going to be at the next meeting, so they said, well, you'll wait until the next.
And is it something that they couldn't, that there's no flexibility if that exact situation doesn't work out, that they would, that we would have other options for that?
Uh, no, I believe they have some.
Alternates?
They have some other space in mind as well. I don't know that it's in LEH, but they had mentioned in communication that.
Okay. Okay.
I think there's a, there's a similar sanctuary, I'm going to say, in Southfield, Massachusetts, which.
Well, the York's Flat Kingdom has a butterfly exhibit that's really nice on a cold day. All right.
Anything to miscellaneous, because that's definitely not mine.
I have something, did you have something?
Go ahead.
I have nothing.
I would like to bring out that the town of Dover.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to talk about that now or later?
I can certainly talk about it if you'd like.
You can talk about it and make it make sense, or I can, whatever you want.
Okay, well, I'll start, and then.
All right, great.
Katrin had contacted me today, and I think I had something miscellaneous. Dover is being pushed into a flotarial legislative representative district with Lee and.
Dermann Madbury.
Lee Dermann Madbury. And this same proposal is slated to put Lee into two floterial districts too. Essentially, Lee has its own representative for its own District of Lee right now, as well as one they share with Barrington. And the, as it's going forward, the new legislative districts put Lee, you lose your own district, and you are in one district that features Dover and another district that features Durham. So, essentially, it's quite unlikely that you would ever have a Lee representative again. And Dover is planning on mounting some sort of legal challenge. It's not the entire city, it's Ward Four of Dover that is being included with Lee and Madbury and Durham, that they're not excited about. And Katrin had contacted me just to discuss this generally today and said that she would like to bring it up at the meeting. So, I told her I would under miscellaneous, and then probably forgot.
We currently have, if we go forward with this plan, we've lost it in Concord. And I, I don't think that that's acceptable. I think that we, number of people in Lee represents, which should have a representative on it. And I think that if we don't challenge this, and this kind of behavior continues to go forward, and I think that Dover doing this on their own is unfortunate, and I think it would be much more powerful if Lee and possibly even Madbury, Durham, who knows who else, would join us. But Lee deserves a representative. We are already part of a school district where we really struggle to get our voices heard. We already are part of many other things. Lee is a very important, powerful community, and we've lost our voice. And I don't think that's acceptable, so I think we should join Dover if possible in this fight.
Sounds good.
You want to go there?
I can certainly reach out to Dover. Their town administrator and their town attorney are, were being in conjunction with Representative Southworth.
Okay, could you reach out to Madbury and her possibly as well?
Yeah.
I think we're all very clear.
Have any idea in terms of the cost? Because it's going to be legal costs associated with that.
There would be, and I, at this point, I have no idea what the billable hours would be.
I think that's why if we work together, it makes more sense. But I do think the cost is huge if we don't.
Did you? Ms. Regan again?
I think that would be a great thing to, once you have handle on it all, share it with the community, so that we can all write letters as well.
That's a great idea.
Informative, so that we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you. That's a really important issue.
So, I blame Nina Kane, because she's stuck being our representatives, right? Do you want to speak, Nina? I'm just kidding about blaming you.
Very honestly, I haven't followed this process. But even if I'd been there now, I would have been closed out of the. You need to understand that, that the minority party has no input to this at all.
Exactly.
And I just think it's unconscionable. Sorry, but that's my point of view, and you'll never get another Lee resident elected under these circumstances.
And what does it, what is the point of having the largest body that can't represent a town?
This happened to a lot of other communities 10 years ago, when they aggregated in 10 towns into communal districts. And that happened to many small communities, but to force this on us as well is really unfortunate. It's such a hard slog to run for office at all, anyway, anyway. And it's such a waste of time for a $100 a year job. You know, you'd like to be spending your time instead of beating the bushes. And I think any resident of Lee would be so discouraged, they probably wouldn't even try. You'd have to be very well-known to make it in Dover. It's quite unfortunate, that's all I, and whatever can be done to support Dover's efforts, I would encourage.
I think it's vital, yeah, exactly. The expense is worth it for.
But I'm not running again.
Actually, none of our.
Never say never.
I think no one from Lee is running this next year because of this issue.
The chairman is not running.
And I lose Jeff.
Jeff Salloway, if there's no seats, he can't run for a seat.
So, I, yeah, I just think that we, we should definitely look into this and tell them we're very serious about joining them.
Okay, and is the replacement of five and 25 into 11?
Yeah, this is five.
Whatever the new way is.
Yeah, five is our district.
Getting one of the largest governing bodies on earth and not representing them, that doesn't make sense. All right, well, this is the 13th largest governing body. All right.
Good? Anything else in the business? All set? Other business? Move to enter non-public session, I'm for our 91-843, woman number two, sections A, C, and L, the second. Any discussion? No, we'll call vote, you guys, Chris?
Yes.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott Buckley, yes, motion passes.
I just.
All right.
I move to field the minutes for the non-public sessions.
Second.
Any discussion? Katrin, Casper?
Yes.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott Buckley, yes, motion passes. Anything else?